I'd like to call this meeting to the Dalton Select Board to order, please. All those who are able, please rise. Edward, would you lead us from the pad?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody signed in the record over there? Brittany, would you do the roll call, please?
Tony, is it him, Walter?
Present.
Joe Denver?
Here.
John Boyle?
Here.
Bob Bishop?
Here.
Everett Collins?
Present.
And Charles Excuse?
Mark's brief, yeah, he's excused. Okay, next we have the minutes of March 2nd, 2020. I was not here, so Mr. Boyle, would you handle these, please?
Yeah, I'll be where I live. Okay, we have the minutes of March 2nd, first. All right, does anybody see any issues? Put the plates over here.
We could defer approval because there's only two members present tonight out of three. That wasn't present, Bob wasn't present.
Okay, okay, let's defer that one.
Correct.
Okay.
You want it to second?
Yeah. Probably still looking correct.
Yeah.
I think the same as...
And the ninth?
It was the ninth last week.
Yeah, we'll have to do it, we'll defer.
Thanks, it's all deferred.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The public to address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on your meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address the comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone that would like to speak to any of the items listed on the agenda? Richard?
Hi, Richard Hall, 164 Green Ridge. If I can, can I be recognized for number six?
Sure.
Okay. The other two things is I understand that our police chief at the moment isn't available, and I just wonder if it's appropriate to not get into why that is, but who's actually running the department, so maybe we can tell the public that. And then number two, obviously, it might come up as another six, is to tell the public how we're going to have meetings within the town and communicate with the town moving forward. That'd be most helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will get to number six, right off the bat. The coronavirus discussion, Dr. Doyle?
Right, I'm right here. Dan Doyle, should I stand?
Yeah, do anything you want.
Sure. Okay, I'll start standing up. I am a longtime member of the Board of Health and currently the chair. I also am on medical staff at Berkshire Medical Center, where I worked for 30 years in pulmonary and critical care medicine before becoming the chief of staff and last year the chief medical officer. So I'm speaking to you on behalf of myself as a citizen and a member of the Board of Health, not as an employed physician at Berkshire Medical Center, although my experience there certainly informs what I have to tell you this week. I think you're all familiar with the COVID-19 outbreak and the fact that the governor's taken a lot of serious steps to try and get this under control. I think if you look at this phenomenon, in my experience, this is the kind of situation where you're always behind where you think you are in terms of the spread of the disease. And what we know about COVID-19 is that it's a disease that is similar to the flu, but more serious, and it is specific in terms of the population within the community that it affects most seriously. It is a far more serious disease for older citizens than it is for young citizens. The estimated mortality rate appears to be around 1%. That compares to influenza that has a mortality rate of a tenth of a percent. But when you get to be over 65, the mortality rate from the flu is 1%, 10 times the point 10. And for the coronavirus, COVID-19, it appears that the mortality rate for people who are 65 and older is around, can be around 10%. That's a big deal. Now, you have to look at that in terms of what we have here in Berkshire County. In Berkshire County, what we've experienced is that the initial onset of the disease was community-based. And what that means is up until two weeks ago, it appeared that people who were going to come down with the coronavirus caught it someplace where it was already present. They were in Europe, they were over in Asia, and they contracted the disease there and brought it to the United States. But in Berkshire County, the first case of the COVID-19 infection was someone who lives in Berkshire County, hasn't traveled outside of the area, and we have no idea how he caught it. But we do know that he caught it and he also infected other individuals in whom he came in close contact, and they were hospitalized at Berkshire Medical Center. That's how he picked up the fact that the disease was present in the community. And that first case was up in Clarksville, but since then, there've been other community-based cases in Pittsfield, in Great Barrington, and in Otis. So it's present throughout the county. And that means that it's around us and with us right now. So the only way to try and prevent the spread of the disease is to keep it from getting to other people. You don't have any direct treatment for it. The best way to get at it is to keep it from spreading. Now, the other thing that we seem to find out from the disease, as emergent as you get to know more about it, is that a lot, younger people often have it, but they don't have much by way of symptoms. So if you look at published reports from the Diamond Princess cruise ship in Japan, they tested everybody, and they found 700 cases, but of those, 400 of those people didn't have symptoms or only had minor symptoms. So the disease can spread in the community without you really knowing about it, because people who are shedding the virus may not have much by way of symptoms to suggest they have the disease. So a reason why the schools were closed by the governor is because, not because children get really sick from it, but because they're affected for it. And I was at the meeting of the City of Pittsfield Town Hall last week, and they're concerned about closing the schools because the kids are bringing home and they're going to be watched by the grandparents because the parents are working, and they're going to infect the grandparents. But the fact of the matter is that the sooner you close the schools, the better. If you wait until you have to because it's obvious the disease is in the community and widespread, or you've got enough people who work in the school system where adults are sick, they can't manage the building, then by then it's too late. So fortunately, the schools are closed and other steps are being taken to try and limit this spread of the disease. Berkshire County faces a particular challenge in terms of COVID-19 and the fact that it seems to affect older citizens like myself and many of you on the board particularly.
Uh-oh.
Hey, well, facts are facts. Berkshire County has about 125,000 people. In the United States, 16% of the population is 65 years of age or older. In Berkshire County, it's 23% of the population. 50% again, half again as high as the rest of the country. In Massachusetts, it's like 16 and a half percent, or 65 or older. So what that means is we have 29,000 people in Berkshire County who are 65 years of age or older. And if you think about that, the estimates of the chance of infection if we don't control it now is up, let's just say 30% of people over 65 come down with this. You're talking about 10,000 people. And if it has a 10% mortality rate, you're going to have 1,000 deaths over the course of the disease. If you spread that out over six months, you're going to have 160 people dying every month for six months. That's five people a day dying from this disorder, if it gets as widespread as it has been already in parts of Europe and what you saw over in China. So it's a very, very serious public health problem and something that we have to address aggressively to try and get this under control. At Berkshire Medical Center, we have an ICU of 20 beds, and we have about 20 ventilators there. Generally, I'll say we run three or four patients on ventilators for respiratory failure. So we have 16 ventilators. So if you have 16 ventilators, and you have a month, you have about 500 ventilator days. 500 days you can have somebody on a ventilator. If of those 160 people who die every month, if they're in the hospital, they go on a ventilator first and they're on for 10 days, that's 1,600 ventilator days. We don't have the capacity to care for the people who are going to get sick. And that doesn't even get at the fact that under those circumstances, people who work in the hospital are going to be home on quarantine, or they're going to be isolated because they have the infection. And so the people who are left are going to be working overtime to try and care for these people under very difficult circumstances. So this is a very serious public health problem, and I think I'm glad to see the town of Dalton is declaring a state of emergency. The best thing that we could do in Berkshire County is to just shut the county down.
Doctor, you think...
You have a question yet?
Yes, yes.
I bet you do.
Do you think the three weeks is sufficient enough?
We'll find out. I think what has to happen and in the process of happening is you've got to shut down the county, put everybody in place, start to do testing, and find out where we are in terms of how prevalent the disease is in the community, and then see where we can go with it. Anything less than that is just inviting disaster. And if nothing happens, I'm sure a certain segment of the community is going to say, "Ah, you're a melagematic, this is overblown." I'm just going to say, "I'm relieved." I'm glad if it's happening.
Questions?
No, no, it's been, you know, we're at Bay State, so we're hearing the same thing. You know, and it's like we have to, no matter what side of the political aisle you sit on, as public health, as you listen to your local leaders, like we're, I think we're blessed to have somebody like Dr. Doyle on our team, so for sure.
I got a question.
Sure.
Very serious issue. We realize, I mean, we don't live in a bubble. We realize this is an important issue, and we're very familiar with it, those opposed to pay attention to it, and I think everybody here does, what happens in national affairs. What do this board and your board specifically do for the town of Dalton to enable us to stem the flow, so to speak, of this virus?
Yeah, so limit activity. I think, you know, the number of people here is actually on the high side.
Yeah.
I'm kind of nervous staying here, being with you all this evening. I think, you know, 10, sounds like a better number. Closing everything except for essential, you know, grocery stores, pharmacies, the hospital, and being able to get gas. And otherwise, everybody just stays in place.
So that's your recommendation, is to limit activity, no matter where it is?
Yeah.
Churches, clubs, senior centers?
Absolutely. The senior center, I met with Ms. Peace from the senior center last week.
Yeah.
We talked about this, and her concern was that there are a lot of seniors who rely upon the senior center going for meals a few times a week. You've got to figure out how to get those meals to them. They shouldn't be going out, they should stay where they are. The best thing senior citizens can do is to just stay home and have somebody drop off the groceries until this is over.
So you would recommend us closing the senior center, for one? I'm just trying to go for specifics, things we can do here.
Yes, we recommend that, in turn, you should close the senior center except for the meals, and I think that for...
That's welcome. The meals on wheels is still available, but they can run...
Whatever the mechanism is to make sure these people don't go without food.
I noticed in our pamphlet here, we just got an edict from the governor that says, "Close bars and restaurants on Tuesday night."
He did that, yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday night at 12:00 AM.
You know, the CRAs closed, I've been talking to Allison Peters, she did that. I think all the fitness centers are just closed down. I went by the Rip City there, where yesterday afternoon on 4:00, I was meeting at the hospital on the way back, there were 15 cars parked out there. Booked my head in, bunch of young men working on their ability to hit a fastball. Not a good idea. Doesn't really show an understanding for them in terms of what's going on in the community, nor wherever their parents were, let them go down and do that kind of thing.
So...
This is the, and, you know, the trouble is that we haven't, fortunately, we haven't had many new cases start to emerge. We have to wait and see what's going to happen. One of the difficulties that we have here compared to, say, South Korea, is there, they're able to do a lot of testing. You know, they have the infrastructure to ramp up very quickly, and we're slowly getting that onboard. We trialed having a tent, people can drive in and be tested and leave today. We're going to try to expand that to do more patients tomorrow, and as we get the ability online to do testing, we'll be able to expand that out to other members of the community so we can find out exactly how extensive things are. And we do have, we have had, from a public sales standpoint, the responsibility of the Board of Health are to manage cases that have been identified and people who have been exposed to cases. So at Berkshire Medical Center, there are a significant number of employees who were exposed to patients who had the COVID-19 before we realized what was going on in the community and put those patients on isolation. Those people have been reported to the DPH, and they get on what's called the Maven site. Maven stands for the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiology Network. And the public health nurse, Leslie Drager, who works for Dalton in a number of towns, has those names, which she just got in the past 24 hours, and she's been contacting the individuals who have been on quarantine in Dalton, largely because they're furloughed employees from Berkshire Medical Center. We've had 16 in the town of Dalton. And fortunately, they're all feeling well, unless you could get a hold of 12 out of the 16, and hopefully they'll be coming back online, able to work within the next week.
Doctor, what should, like, the police do? I mean, they're out there with the public. I mean, they're, if they give somebody a ticket, they're addressing somebody or something like that. Is there any precautions they can take, or what can we do to the town hall to prevent people from, do we wipe the doors down, or...
Yeah, we wipe down, clean, disinfect and frequently, keep people at a six-foot distance. Surely the officers, as they handle things, should have gloves on, I'm sure they're doing that. If you're outside, you know, the virus gets spread out quickly, so they have less risk of being affected than if you're in an indoor situation. We do have responsibilities in terms of quarantine. I have publications from the DPH regarding what quarantine means and what isolation means. I think it's important for you to understand the difference between quarantine and isolation. Quarantine means that someone's been exposed to an individual who has COVID-19 infection, and they need to stay home. They can go outside, go out in the yard, go for a walk, but you've got to stay home, and within the household, there's certain precautions you should take to try and keep from infecting anybody that is living there with you in case you come up with the infection. Someone who's being isolated is someone who's been documented to have COVID-19 infection, and the requirements for them in the home are much stricter, particularly in terms of the people they're living with. We may start to face a situation where you have individuals who have infections with COVID-19, and it's going to be difficult to isolate them or to have a living situation that will be safe for, not them, but the people that they live with. And I think that's something that you may have to think about in Dalton. They're starting to consider that possibility in Pittsfield from my conversations with the Department of Health there. But having people understand what quarantine means and to abide by the requirements and to understand what isolation means and to abide by that is important. As this disease develops, if we have more cases, many people are going to be able to stay home and won't have to be hospitalized, but they have to isolate themselves in order to prevent the spread of the disease to members of the family and to other members of the community. And I'll drop these off for you, I'm sure people are going to need to know this over the next several weeks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, doctor, you mentioned this Rip City, which is some kind of a gym or...
Yeah, yeah.
...health club on Dalton Mission Road, right?
Hopefully they're closed today.
You seem to feel that they're overtime regating. Does your board, the Board of Health, have the authority to close that place temporarily?
If we have the support of the selectmen, I would say that we should have all gyms, but they would close everything.
Yeah, I think we lack the authority, but I think your board, as a public health emergency, has the authority.
But I think that a decision like this needs to be made countywide. If we, in Dalton, we do it, which I think is a good idea, people just go someplace else, you know? I mean, you've got to do it as a community, not just as a...
How does that happen as a county? Is that more a mass DPH kind of guidance in that way?
Well, that's, well, the DPH, you know, the governor has the authority, you know, to, I mean, he's already exercising that.
Yeah.
Not to use a pun.
Correct.
But yeah, I think, and I, what I worry about is that we're going to keep, we're going to keep trying to catch up here, you know? It was 2:50 last week, it's 5:00 on Sunday.
Although we're technically, you know, like a small rural community, still here, it's hitting us big because of the population structure.
With the declaration of emergency.
Well, I think we're particularly at risk because of the pandemic.
Right. San Francisco just announced that they're putting their whole city under quarantine, basically, you have to stay in place.
Yeah, yeah.
So the whole city's...
New York could be next.
Dr. Doyle, I don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Dr. Doyle's thoughtful enough to call me last Thursday, and Dan Filio said it, and we had a long meeting, Kelly PZK, and what came out of that meeting is, there were several suggestions, and you mentioned one of them, what to do with the senior center, but we should discuss this here tonight, because one of the things we did do was to say that the meals at the senior center would be delivered. So there's going to be no activities at the senior center at all. If it's, if we can, we would keep the employees in place, but we'll deliver the meals. Similarly, with the library, we discussed allowing people to take out books, but they wouldn't be able to come into the library, they'd be put out in the lobby, and then again, those books would be delivered. The third thing we talked about today was closing the town hall to the public. Employees could stay here if they needed to. We could have an employee go out, for instance, to, because things like marriage certificates or marriage intentions have to be done in person. So if we wanted to do that, we could set up a little table down outside at the police department, get sanitized and all that. But I want to hear what your thoughts are, particularly, Dr. Doyle's, on whether we should do that, because, you know, we want, of course, to keep the citizens who come in here at low risk and as well as our employees.
I would suggest we take every precaution possible that we have the authority to take.
Yes.
And then support any communication to the state, to support whatever the state decides from a public health perspective.
You're only going to know you did the right thing if nothing happens.
Right. We have a declaration of an emergency. I'm not sure who...
Late this afternoon, we got some more information from our attorney, KP Law, and they had a draft declaration of emergency, a joint declaration of the select board and the Board of Health. Something I drafted that for you to consider this evening.
Yeah, I...
It gives us a certain amount of authority and the cohesiveness of the select board and the Board of Health working together, and it would make us eligible for federal funds, should they...
But not only that, it would give us the right to close down all these places, correct?
I think it, the Board of Health, KP Law sent us some extensive information on what our authorities are, but the recommendation is that the select board and the Board of Health act jointly together.
Dr. Doyle, does your board agree with this emergency?
Well, the chair does.
He just saw for the first time this evening.
Okay. And we all have a copy of it in our...
Everybody has a copy. You have the original in the right folder.
Right. Should I read it, or should we just, I think everybody has a copy of it, should I read it for the record?
And I'm not trying to pick out one particular enterprise or put somebody out of business, but I think this is, I think this is a real serious situation for our community.
You should probably read it for the audience, TV.
Dan?
Just a matter of point, Mr. Bishop. The declaration of emergency would also give you opportunities under MEMA that would access to some, anything that they have that's available for the communities.
Cool.
It would make it easier.
Okay.
So I would endorse it.
Okay.
One other comment, Mr. Truman, just as we go and read this declaration of emergency, as the, as the governor has set in the rule that for restaurants and bars, there's no sit-down service as of, I believe it starts midnight tonight or tomorrow, tomorrow morning, that, just a note for the community, we can still support our local businesses by takeout or delivery and just helping our local economy in that level, too. They're not shut down completely, but those that are open, let's try and support them as best as we can.
Also, I want to tell anybody out there listening that a lot of the stores will deliver groceries to your home, you won't even have to go down there, you can call them up and order your food online, and they actually deliver your groceries right to your house for a small fee, of course.
I was going to say, the Board of Health is a bit of a dissident, because we don't have a health agent. Bad timing. We do have the public health nurses, and I think we may need to call on more resources in that regard if we have more cases that require investigation because of quarantine or isolation. That's part of the responsibility of the Board of Health to make certain that we follow up on those cases that are identified by the DPH for us.
Okay.
The other thing I want to talk about is long-term care facilities. We have, we have some in the community. Those are particularly at...
I bet they're high-risk.
You look at the experience up in Washington State and mortality rates there, and that's another reason why trying to get testing onboard so we can test individuals who work in those places, I think is going to be really valuable as we get the capacity built out. Because I think at the present time, the way this virus is going to get into those facilities is by someone who works, who feels fine, but they're shedding the virus. And once it gets into the building, all bets are off after that. Just that in and of itself, in one of the larger long-term care facilities in the county could really tax out resources in terms of critical care.
Yeah?
I just want to make a note that Aruba hasn't seen a single case, I hope you're going there for a...
If you can get there.
If you can get there safely.
Okay, this says, "The town of Dalton, Massachusetts Declaration of Emergency. Whereas the 2019 coronavirus is a highly contagious and potential fatal respiratory disease, the prevalence of which increasingly rapid throughout the world, inclusive of the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization designated the COVID-19 outbreak a panemidemic health emergency. And whereas on March 10th, 2020, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued a declaration of a state of emergency to respond to the COVID-19. And whereas March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States announced a national declaration of emergency. And whereas on March 15th, Governor Baker announced emergency actions to respond to evolving COVID-19 public health emergency impacting the Commonwealth, including prohibitions on public gatherings of 25 or more and prohibiting on-premises consumption of food and drink at bars and restaurants from March 17th until April 6th, 2020, as well as suspension of elementary and secondary educational operations from March 17th until April 6th, 2020. And whereas the select board of the town of Dalton and Board of Health in constellation with the State Department of Public Health have determined that the COVID-19 represents a major disaster which poses an immediate threat to public health, safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside of Dalton. And whereas the select board of the town of Dalton and its Board of Health has determined that the immediate public action is needed to, in order to prevent or minimize the spread of COVID-19 by and among the people of Dalton. And whereas it's critical to take steps to prepare for, respond to, mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to protect the health and welfare of the people of Dalton. And whereas declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and exte-bite the use of resources to protect persons from the impact of COVID-19, including all but not limited to emergencies expenditures pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, and limitations on operating hours and access to public buildings. And whereas the town of Dalton and the Board of Health recommend a state of emergency be declared by the town of Dalton. Now therefore, we, the select board, the town of Dalton of Massachusetts, and the Board of Health of the town of Dalton, Massachusetts hereby declare as of March 16th, 2020, a state of emergency exists in the town of Dalton. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until further notices given pursuant to our judgment that the conditions leading to this declaration are no longer exist. And we will sign it. I'll take a motion to entertain.
Motion to what, accept this?
Accept this, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the order of emergency as dictated in the letter to the town of Dalton.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in... All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Does anyone else have questions or whatever? Richard?
Hi, Richard Hall. I don't know that the doctor knows this, but I'm actually Leslie Craig's husband, who's the health nurse.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Yes. So I think absolutely what's been said there, but one thing, I think, that'd be helpful if you could talk to the public about, is what happens if they feel ill, and what they should do as far as contacting somebody, and how they should do that. And also, once the health nurse or the board of health contacts them, they should be following instructions, because it's in everyone's interest that they follow those instructions. And I think we also, also have to look out for our neighbors, because if someone is quarantined or in isolation, they may need some help with groceries, as you said, because that may not work, just calling up and being able to drop them at the door, and then come out and get the groceries once you've gone. But, but as I said, the main thing is, is to follow instructions. I know sometimes we're not good at that, but it's very important that we do. But as I said, you could explain what people should do if they do feel ill, to let you contact, I think that'd be helpful.
Well, currently, they should contact their primary care physician, whose public health advised them to stay home and practice social distancing and appropriate hygiene in the hospital. Currently, we don't have the ability yet to test everybody who has symptoms, but I believe within the next week, we'll be able to expand that significantly. So, right now, the testing for the COVID-19 is being restricted to people who are known to be exposed to when individual will have the infection and start to develop symptoms. People who come into the emergency room and have to be hospitalized, and you're concerned they could have this infection, so you want to find out if they have it. Or individuals who develop typical symptoms and have traveled to a part of the world where the disease is widespread, although that population has just about stopped, now that overseas travel has really ceased. As we get the capacity to do the testing, the ability to test people who develop symptoms will, will expand, and we'll have to say, just stay home and try and take care of yourself. And we'll be informing the public through the medical, you know, the different practices and the public health nurses, as we get that capacity built out. But right now, in Massachusetts, the ability to do the testing is still limited, so that we have to do it for those people who you think are most at risk first. And if somebody has classic symptoms, but they have mild disease, they don't have to be hospitalized, their medical management is not gonna be any different, whether we are able to do the confrontatory test or not. The test you do for it is a nasal swab. Somebody, usually a nurse, wearing appropriate respiratory protection, takes a swab and they go into your nasal passage, and you have to go a long ways in. This isn't just rubbing the outside of your nose, you have to go deep and get a very deep specimen, so it's not a very comfortable diagnostic procedure to have done. What we're trying to build out is a, is a tent over on the DMC campus, so that individuals who develop symptoms can, will be able to get in their car at some point, and having a doctor's order, and having a time scheduled to have the test done, will be able to drive over, get in line, document that we have an order to do the test, and know where to send the results. And they can drive up and have it done without getting out of their car, go home, and their healthcare provider will give them the results as it becomes available. But our ability to do the testing right now is still limited, so we don't want everybody to be coming in to have the testing done, and when we do have it available to the general public, we want to be certain that we can schedule it, so we don't have the traffic jams of people trying to get the testing done when it does build out. And so we'll be notifying the different practices, so that when people come up with symptoms, they'll be able to order the test as we get the capacity to do it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so, Ken, will you notify the senior center of just doing their meals?
Yeah, they are doing them now. The library, tomorrow I'll proceed with closing the town hall and the public.
Setting up a desk downstairs.
That's acceptable.
Okay, what about our meetings, all the meetings we got scheduled and stuff? What should we do about that, future meetings and?
Well, they're, the, the governor waived the, some of the open meeting law requirements, so we can in fact have virtual meetings, but we'll have to figure out how we can do that, so we don't have to have people participating, board members can call in, but we have to follow the procedures that are out. And there's actually another declaration that you'll have to adopt there, I'm not ready with that tonight, but we can do that as well.
Okay.
And I just wanted, Dr. Doyle mentioned the lack of having a health agent, but the Board of Health interviewed a very competent health, interim health agent, and we should have her on board, be a contract employee, and we should have that person on board this week.
Okay. Has it been advertised for a full-time health agent yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
So the, the part-timer or the interim health agent will be on for a period of three months, that'll allow us to, when we do the job description a little bit, and get it out there, and make sure we get a capable person, but we'll be covered for about three months.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Doyle while we get him cornered?
That was very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got one more back there, Greg.
Yeah, real quickly, I don't, I didn't hear a specific number for gatherings beyond the, what you mentioned of 10.
Well, the, the governor said 25. I believe somebody at the national level talked about 10 sometime today.
C-10.
C-10. So what I mean about always not, always being behind where you think you are?
So would you recommend 10 in town?
You bet.
Okay.
Well, what are we gonna do about this? I mean, are we gonna vote?
He's well saying goodnight.
Are we gonna vote under the powers granted in the Emergency Act to close such and such businesses, as the one the doctor mentioned, the gym?
Yeah.
I mean, 10 with the exception of, you know, grocery stores, I mean, places where you farm.
Yeah, the markets of supplies.
Places of assembly. What are you gonna do?
So you're talking about the American Legion, the Veterans Department?
Yeah, well, that's right in here in the, the governor's name, on bars and restaurants.
Yep.
I don't know exactly how to phrase this, I mean, should we, a general motion to close every business that has an assembly of more than 10 people in town?
Yes.
Isn't that what the board?
No, no, not everything, I don't think you worry like that, because there are businesses that have, that have 10 employees or more, I mean, you have to.
Well, I'm talking about the assembly of the customers. Are you, tell me what you want, I don't know.
Okay, well, what about Election Day or something, you know?
Well, that's six to eight weeks down the road, I mean, we get to think about postponing that, but what the doctor said immediately, the senior center, I guess we've already dealt with that, but he talked about these gyms and things like this.
Right. I, I certainly see the gyms as being a problem, they did.
Well, that's part of the CR, correct?
No. It's a private business.
The city's a private business.
Oh, that's down at Virgins?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Virgins Plaza, or whatever it is. Then you get a place in the Union Block, that's the name of it, two flights up.
The gym studio?
Yeah.
It's closed.
Oh, it's out of business?
No, they closed.
Oh, they closed on their own?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of them are closed.
They mirror the school's schedule, so the school closed, they closed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I'd suggest is, we have the governor's executive order issued yesterday, and it says gatherings over 25 people, because simply substitute gatherings of 10.
10 people.
Board of Health and the Select Board, and just file the governor's language, but substitute 10 for 25, that's my suggestion.
Okay, that's good. We'll make a motion on that, too.
What, instructed town manager to have these places closed, or?
Not, not closed, but they have to limit their attendance, so the gym could stay, technically stay open, but only 10 people could be in the gym.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me read this for the record.
Right, that makes sense.
What it says here is, "Gatherings of over 25 people are prohibited throughout the Commonwealth. Gatherings subject to disorder include, without limitation, community, civic, public, leisure, faith-based events, sporting events with spectators, concerts, conventions, fundraisers, parades, fairs, festivals, and a similar event or activity that brings together 25 or more persons in a single room or single space at the same time in a venue such as an auditorium, stadium, arena, large conference room, meeting hall, theater, gymnasium, fitness center, private club, or any other confined indoor or outdoor space."
That summed it up there.
Yeah.
So let's make a motion.
So we follow and complies with that, but we're quickly gonna fall out of compliance with this.
So, we suggest the national standard.
That's right.
Right.
Chairman, suggest that, make a motion that we change the language of the document, document, to replace 25 with 10.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to just add that, add a little adjustment to that, that we're adopting the national standard of 10, so we're receiving that from the CDC and the federal level of public health.
Okay, so, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, Ken, yourself and your new public health agent and the board of health is gonna have to notify these various businesses that you're limited to 10 customers, or you're gonna be closed.
The same, the same businesses that were notified under this order will be notified.
Now, these, all these, and this thing about bars, from the governor, are all these bars and restaurants been notified?
We signed it out today.
Okay, great. So they know, they're timed, 12 o'clock, they're out of business.
Yeah.
St. Patrick's Day, too.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's fucking wonderful. You're in the bar business.
Yeah, I love it. It's, it's short-term, hopefully.
Yeah, well, this is, has an expiration date of April 4th.
Right.
So anything we do, we kind of piggyback that, if things improve, we can reopen the senior center, reopen the town hall. Now, Ken, oh, go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry, is there any question?
Just, just so you know, many of the places that have closed within the community, they have, they have put it forward as being on a week-to-week basis, so they will, they, they did it in such a way as they could follow what the standards are being set by the community, by the state, by the government, so that they can make a decision on what they're gonna do with the, their operations and such.
This is a challenging issue for our local economy, for sure, for all establishments, but when, and we're, again, we're blessed with Dr. Doyle's leadership, but you work in healthcare, you see, you see the trends that are going on nationally and globally, and if we don't take these actions, it's gonna catch up with us and put us in a very difficult position. So it's really just trying to bend this curve of people that are being impacted by, by this, this condition, and it's, it's not much we can do.
The big thing I worry about is getting the word out to the public, can we get this in the Eagle somehow, or how we get this out on the town website somehow, or?
We'll get it out. What I'm gonna do is refresh, and this is an order of the Board of Health and the Select Board, have you sign it, and then we'll get it out.
We signed it tonight.
Yeah. The, I'm gonna have a specific order.
Yeah.
That looks like the governor's order.
Give us a jingle, we'll run it out and sign it.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's signed.
Okay.
And then Dan on there.
Get it in the paper, anyway.
Richard?
Just one quick thing, because I think you were gonna introduce our standing police chief or one of these gentlemen.
Sergeant Furlong is our acting chief of the police right now.
Right.
Okay.
Just, Dan, the other question, but.
Yeah, Dan.
So, so that the board is aware, MEMA has set up a information for, to help small businesses to either short-term loans or other ways of funding that is gonna be available. Information has been posted on the Dalton Emergency Management website, there'll be other information coming forward with it, they're recognizing the fact that this is going to be a hardship, especially small businesses, so they've taken action, they actually took it last week to address this, should it come forward. So there is gonna be some mitigation by the state through the federal government, what it exactly will be, I can't tell you, but there are steps are being taken to help out in some way, shape, or form.
Very helpful, thanks.
Ken, a quick procedural question, what exactly you said, did you say was gonna happen at the library?
Library's gonna be closed to patrons, public's not gonna be allowed into the library, but they will take telephone orders for books, so they'll try to conduct the business over the phone, if people, they can come into the lobby, so they're gonna minimize contact with the public. We'll have to learn a little bit, a little bit more about what kind of personal protective equipment our patrons, our, our libraries that should have, but they'll deliver books to the lobby, they'll take books from the lobby, and they are looking at delivering books around the town.
Great.
Picking them up.
Hope people listen to that. And, I don't know, this bigger thing, but these people are town employees, whose facility or area of responsibility is gonna be closed, i.e. the senior center, I assume that they will be, continue to be paid until we arrive at a bigger and better decision over this virus thing.
Right, right now, they're going to continue to be on duty in the senior center, in the library, in the town hall.
Yep.
No one has been furloughed.
Yep.
Unless the governor actually closes these public facilities, but right now, that's the plan, it's.
People don't have to use their sick time, they just.
That's right.
Carry on, the best they can.
Yeah, in fact, the library director told me today that he has lots of projects that he can't get to while they're serving the public, so this is gonna allow them to do things that they don't ordinarily, don't ordinarily have time for.
It's like the spring cleaning, like kids.
Yeah, that's right. Can, can we suggest that if there's any employees that can do their work from home, that they'd be allowed to during this crisis?
If they can, and it's, it's understanding municipal setting.
Yep, I understand.
Yeah.
But there may be some.
There may be some.
In all departments, please permit. You have to get the civilian employees down.
Set up your, out of your car, you know, no problem.
In the library, highway department.
Dr. Doyle, thank you, can't thank you enough.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone, anyone else? Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item seven. The time and bond proposal for sewer evaluation survey.
Yeah, this has gotta be a lighter subject, I think.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Your numbers, ah, oh.
So, my name is Pete Balinski, and that's Jake, Jake.
Project engineer.
We've been before the board in the past, these two years, related to this, this subject. I guess the three things I want to make sure we cover are, you know, what is the reason, why are we doing this sewer system evaluation? And then, second is to cover, you know, what was done in the Phase 1 work that was completed? And lastly, is what is intended for Phase 2.
Give him the minutes for the last two days.
You know, so Jake is gonna, he basically handed out some of the information you've already seen before, relative to the results of Phase 1, by the thing appears, some repeating, we could probably go through it a little quickly, before getting into what Phase 2 looks like. So, with that, Jake?
Yeah, so like Pete mentioned, I just wanna go over a bit of a background of what an SSES is, why we're doing it, some of the work we've done so far, leading up to this point, and this work for this proposal. So, bit of background, definitions, II, what is infiltration? It's basically groundwater that gets into your buried pipes, through cracks, are there defects in the pipe, open joints, broken pipes. Inflow is essentially clean water getting into your system, through direct sources, direct connections, some pumps and basins, catch basins, roof leaders, things like that. Project drivers, why are we doing this? One big driver, Mass DDP regulation requirement, 314 CMR 12, essentially requiring an II analysis by the end of 2017, which is essentially the top-level screening-level evaluation, essentially doing some initial work to try and rule out some of the areas of your sewer system for further investigation, just because a further investigation is a little bit more expensive, and it's a, it's a way to be as cost-effective as possible with these evaluations. From there, recommendations are made, and a sewer system evaluation survey is conducted in accordance with the I analysis recommendations. That's essentially a follow-up to the I analysis, but it's a more granular look at the sewer system, and developing recommendations for repairs to the sewer system to mitigate some of the II issues with the sanitary sewer system. Another big reason, II, it reduces capacity. It reduces capacity of your overall sanitary systems and convey sewage. When you get a rain event, you get a big massive inflow of water coming into your sanitary sewer system, you can end up with potentially overflow or things like that. Additionally, you're basically paying money to send clean water to Pittsfield for treatment. You're adding your, to your overall treatment costs, and you're basically paying money to, to clean rainwater. So, bit of background, Dalton's sanitary sewer system includes thirty-six miles of buried sewer pipe, ranging from four inches to twenty-four inches, that's the Husaton interceptor. Portions of this pipe are actually over ninety years old, especially in the downtown area with some vitrified clay pipe. Wastewater from Hinsdale flows into the Dalton sewer system on the east side, and then the wastewater flow is conveyed to Pittsfield sewer system on the west side where it's treated at the Pittsfield wastewater treatment plant. So as part of, as part of our 2016 project tasks, that was, that's the, that was that upper-level study, we divided the sewer system into nine drainage areas. That's based on the DDP guidance to try and make your drainage areas as close to twenty thousand linear feet of pipe as possible.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yep, that's true.
This is kind of a breakdown of, of those nine drainage areas throughout the town, these, these borders representing the boundaries of those drainage areas. Additionally, we inspected twenty-seven manholes and monitored.
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven manholes. Monitored flow through the system, groundwater, and rainfall for thirteen weeks as part of that 2016 study. So we recorded wastewater flow continuously at drainage area outlets. We had temporary flow meters installed at the outlet of each of these drainage areas. Recorded total, total daily rainfall at the DPW garage throughout the study period, as well as groundwater locations at manholes at five locations, and performed some initial instantaneous flow monitoring in drainage areas two and six. Additionally, as a cost-saving means, we actually utilized the existing flow meter going into Pittsfield, the, the main sewer pipe going into Pittsfield, there's an existing meter there that we're able to utilize to try and save the town as much cost as possible. So, this graph is essentially a, an example of some of the graphs that we pulled together as part of this study. This is for drainage area nine, which is this last drainage area before the majority of the wastewater from the town goes into Pittsfield. We just pointed out, so essentially, this is, over time, these blue bars show precipitation, daily precipitation. The green line shows your minimum daily flows, gray your average daily flows, and orange your peak daily flows. So, you would anticipate if you didn't have any infiltration, any I at all, your minimum flows wouldn't vary a whole heck of a lot. That's basically the small amount of wastewater going through your system at night, you know, maybe someone's getting up to flush a toilet or something, maybe you have a couple of businesses that have three shifts. But when you see peaks in the minimum flows that correspond with, you know, some rain, you can, you can say potentially, you know, those are indications of infiltration. And then, when you see large peaks, like you see with the maximum flow rate, that's corresponding with a rain event, that's evidence of inflow, basically a surge of water coming into the system when you have a rain event. So, overall findings, the sewer system appeared to be in relatively good condition. There's some structural deficiencies observed in some of the manholes, but overall, it seemed to be in decent shape. The average infiltration during the study was about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, which is about forty percent of the total wastewater flow.
Wow.
And wastewater flows can, we, we observed, actually could double during larger storms. So, your peak flows going through the system would actually double with a large rain event. So, we performed data analysis based on all the data that was collected during the study period. We performed that in accordance with mass DDP's study guidelines. Their study guidelines include thresholds for what they consider to be significant levels of II. So for infiltration, that's infiltration rate's greater than four thousand gallons per day, per inch diameter mile of pipe length. It's kind of a mouthful, but, and then, for inflow, further evaluation is required, and you've, you're less concerned with significant inflow in areas, which is essentially the cumulative eighty percent of the total inflows in your sewer system. So, that'll become a little bit clearer in the next couple of tables.
Do the math on that second bullet, is that coming up?
On a second?
Yeah, infiltration rate's greater than four thousand gallons per day, if I understand it, we're at four hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons per day, right?
Oh, so this is, this is just looking at.
Something different.
Yeah, it's, it's a little different. It's basically looking at your, your flow during dry weather days, when you would expect there to be no flow, so basically at night, when you don't expect there to be really any flow at all, other than maybe a few people flushing toilets. If you see a significant amount of flow going through the system, you can say, oh, majority of that's probably infiltration coming in through the groundwater. So it's basically taking that flow amount and dividing it by the total length of pipe in the sewer system, and also by the size of pipe in the sewer system.
What I'm jumping to, maybe you guys get this in your conclusion, if I look at the findings, it says average infiltration during study, four hundred and fifty-four, four hundred and fifty-four gallons, yeah, four hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons per day.
Right.
Which is forty percent of our total wastewater flow. If I look at infiltration rate's greater than four thousand, next picture on the data analysis is excessive. I'm just doing quick math in my, my head. I don't know what the pipe diameter per mile calculation is in this, but I'm just thinking of, we're really excessive. What do we?
Well, you'll see in the next table, it, it, once you, once you make it relative to the actual size of the, of the drainage area.
Yeah.
You can actually start ruling out a lot of your drainage areas.
Okay.
It's basically relative over the entire, relative to the size of the drainage area as, as a way to kind of eliminate, you know, you might have some infiltration in your system in some of these areas, but it's not great enough that it makes it worthwhile to chase at this point, is essentially why DDP makes that threshold requirement.
All right. So I'm jumping down to why do we pay Pittsfield to clean our rainwater?
Yeah.
Yeah. Always has been for a while.
So this next table shows the, the ranking for each drainage area in terms of peak infiltration and the peak infiltration rate corresponding to, not only, so you see the total peak infiltration from that drainage area, and then it being normalized based on the total amount of pipe and size of pipe in that drainage area. And really, there's only one drainage area where it was considered excessive above that four thousand gallons per day, per inch mile threshold. Drainage area two down here, just highlighted yellow in the Green Ridge Park area, where we saw it really be above that threshold. Drainage areas seven and five were close, but we were able to kind of rule them out as, as far as requiring further study. And if we move on to the inflow, in yellow, you can see, these are, these are the drainage areas where we recommended further study, where you see the direct inflow volume over time. So this table's basically ranked over the direct inflow volume, and the percent of direct inflow volume over the entire system, and basically the cumulative, cumulative of that direct inflow volume to try and get to that eighty percent. So basically, these rows shaded in yellow are, represent approximately eighty percent of the total inflow in your drainage area.
Remind everybody what the, what constitutes inflow again?
So inflow's basically direct flow going into the system from catch basins, basement, some pumps directly connected to the, to your sanitary sewer system, roof leaders, things like that. So you'll see this type of flow peak really when you have a rain event, a wet weather event, where you're seeing rainwater go directly into these drains, or, or being pumped directly from a some pump in someone's basement, directly into your, into your sewer system, creating a surge of water and potentially overcoming a capacity of the sewer system. So, to get back to the recommendations for inflow, where drainage areas three and six, nine and four, so it's, it's these drainage areas that are shaded in orange here. So recommendations, proceeding with the next phase of investigation, sewer system evaluation survey. The SSES focuses on areas of concern identified through the I analysis, and it's really a much, a much more granular evaluation of each drainage area as it pertains for either infiltration or inflow. And the purpose is really to identify specific sources and root out the means of repair to eliminate that, those II sources. And as part of the SSES, we would include a cost effectiveness analysis where we, this is, this just pertains to infiltration, but we essentially look at, once we find a source of infiltration, we say, okay, how much will it cost to repair versus, or over, let's say a twenty-year study period, how, how much would it cost to transport and treat that rainwater? So it's essentially looking at, okay, yeah, you're definitely potentially treating clean groundwater getting into the system, but, you know, how cost-effective is it to do repair versus, you know, treating that groundwater, so.
And just to make sure I'm following this correctly, this, this data here, the data analysis inflow is based on a thirteen-week study?
Yes.
That's okay.
Can you just? Back in the prior page, the one we yelled.
Sure.
Yeah. Where is drainage area three and six?
So three is, over here is on the east side, or, yeah, the east side of town.
That's the highest ranking one?
Yeah.
That's the Hinsdale Road, do you, I think you planned?
Yeah, so it's, it's Owens.
Owens Road?
Owens Road here, and Hinsdale Road here, yeah.
That's three and six?
That's, that's three right here, and then, right next to this is six, six right here.
Okay, East Main Street?
Just throw out a street name on there, Illinois area.
Yeah, like, like Apple Tree Lane, Mountain View Terrace, that kind of area there, yeah.
Okay, where's, where's he, nine?
So nine's all the way over here.
Okay, like by Park Avenue?
So that's like, yeah, Park Avenue, and down here too, also on South Street there.
And four?
Four here. Yeah, so this is near like David Street, Anthony Road.
Okay, Alder North Street?
Uh, East Deming Street.
All those places near streams.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to where you would expect to see some pumps pumping into the line and, and roof leaders?
I think so.
I think the groundwater goes up a lot when we have rain. The pipes are surrounded by, oh.
Yeah, there's a lot of streams associating near these areas too.
But this, Owens Road, I'm surprised at that one, because it's relatively new. Pittsfield put it in, installed it to serve their wastewater facility up at Cleveland Reservoir.
Again, again, because it's inflow, it's, it's, it's things getting into the sewer, it could be simply some pumps and such, it, it, the sewer could be brand-new.
Yeah.
But the inflow coming, is, is flow coming into that sewer from external sources like catch basins and stuff.
Yeah.
And so, as opposed to where we were looking at with infiltration, when groundwater comes up high, we're only talking about the Green Ridge Park area, that groundwater coming up, coming up high is infiltrating into the pipe. There's probably a lot of AC pipe there.
Uh, it's all AC over there, yeah, so it's seventies, but, yeah, I guess the other part too is, this drainage area three encompasses both that new PVC pipe that you're talking about, as well as, on the other side of this drainage area, you have some ACs, some BCs, so some vitrified clay pipes, so some, definitely some older piping in there too, on the south side of that drainage area.
Does part of your investigation run cameras down through these pipes?
Yeah, it will, it will, yeah. Now, that, that'll be part of, so if you actually, if you flip the next page.
Last page?
Yeah. So, we essentially split this up into two phases. DPD likes to see specific types of investigations we perform as part of these SSESs. We try and phase it to do the initial investigations first and try and eliminate as much as possible, especially, like you'll see phase B, the building inspections, is really, really costly, so we try and investigate first through other means before there, so we can kind of rule it out. But to kind of back up, the infiltration investigations, as we said before, really only encompasses drainage area two. So the initial part of that will be full isolation gauging, where it's basically looking pipe to pipe, manhole to manhole, basically plugging a section of pipe, putting in a weir, and measuring the amount of flow coming through that pipe, and seeing actually how much groundwater's coming through. So that work is typically done between like twelve AM and four AM, so it's usually done at night, you don't expect any flows coming through the piping, you have a pretty good guess that what's coming through is actually groundwater from infiltration. So that, that will occur throughout that drainage area, and then, from there, we can make recommendations on where to do the CCTV cammering, like you were talking about before, where we put a camera in there basically, and look for any defects, any, anything where you can see, you know, water gushing in or something like that, like you can see in the first, I think it's, this, maybe the second, yeah, the second, the second slide in this presentation. And from there, we can make recommendations, looking at, estimate how much flow is actually coming in, how much is it going to cost to repair that, and try and make some cost-effective determinations.
Yeah.
On the inflow side, we begin with a smoke testing program. So each one of these drainage areas in orange will be smoke tested, where smoke is blown into your, your sewer system, and essentially, it's a, it's a survey where we look and look for any smoke coming out of, of any, any pipes, any catch basins. It's, basically, if there's a direct, a direct inflow connection, the smoke will find its way through there, and you'll get a, you'll get a hit basically, and you'll be able to see that.
Now, are some people going to get the smoke in their basements, or?
Potentially, yeah. So as part of this, we typically have some sort of a flyer system or something like that to inform residents, in your neighborhood, you're going to have smoke testing occurring, please be advised, you know, notify fire department, notify police departments, so that if they get calls, they know what it's about, and just make sure everyone's as notified as possible, so that, you know, no one's in a, a big panic if they start seeing smoke coming through.
I could see, so panic.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
When you're conducting your various investigations, do you ever run across a service or an individual service to the sewer that isn't connected to the sewer?
Um, I've heard it before, I've, I've actually seen it myself, but I have heard about it in, in one particular community where that was the case. But, no, I, I don't, I don't know if we've ever run into that as part of one of these analyses.
Talking about roof drains, you mentioned roof drains before, you called them something else, into roof leaders or something?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
In other words, roof drains. Is there any way of computing a large roof, how much water that building actually puts into the sewer system?
Yeah, you'd look at it based on how large the roof is.
Square footage?
Yeah, and then kind of make a determination from that.
Yeah, 'cause I think we got a couple of those in town.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably in this town hall.
Yeah, so those are pretty easy to spot, those are probably one of the easiest things to spot with a smoke, a, a smoke survey, is there?
So when you're out about surveying and investigating, if there's anybody that's doing that, you're going to tell us, right?
Oh, yeah, so, so, um, those, those will all be, in that survey, we'll have a full list, that'll be in. be included in our report. And, yeah, so you'll have all those findings.
You can actually find some pumps that are being pumped in there also?
Yeah, that's the one tricky one with the smoke testing, sometimes you can't really find those, if there's a check valve or something on the pump, the smoke won't really get its way through. So as part of that smoke testing, we'll try and find as many sources as possible, see if it's close to quantifying the amount of inflow that was actually observed during the initial study. If we can't recover all those, we'll then move on to building surveys or building inspections where, you know, we'll have guys actually go into people's basements and look for sump pumps that are connected to the sewer system.
Yeah, a lot of people connect the sump pumps right to that washing machine drain?
Absolutely.
And smoke's not going to come out of that, but you would certainly spot it in a building inspection.
Yep.
Are you allowed to do building inspections, or do you have to get permission from the person?
Yeah, so it's a similar deal where a flyer, a flyer system, maybe something posted on the website, letting people in that neighborhood know, hey, you know, somebody will be stopping by to request access to the basement. And typically, they'll try at least three times to get into the basement, so it's just somebody coming.
Yeah, you'll get some resistance on.
That's what I mean, it's kind of, what they refuse.
It comes back to you guys to basically allow us to.
So there's a price on this?
Yes.
Would we have that in funding?
Yeah.
It's 141, 140?
Well, that's just for the study.
That's just for the second study.
Yeah, the second, Phase Two of the study, yeah.
Yeah, the first, first one's very no half a million.
That's going to tell us what, where the problems are and how much they're going to cost to rectify.
Right.
Right? Am I correct in saying that?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Okay. The study that's under consideration now, that we're asking us to, you're asking us to authorize and fund, when that's complete, you'll be able to tell us how much it's going to cost to rectify our problem.
Yes, yes.
Or tell us how much, maybe our highway department can rectify some of them.
Oh, oh, oh.
There might be a minor one, Ed.
We probably don't replace roads at these areas that we're looking at this.
We repaired a lot of sewer lines when they were out the first time, they found problems then, and, you know, we worked close with them and the contractors that they hired.
So some high-risk areas kind of?
Yeah.
So we're going to identify areas that you're going to have to spot repairs, you're going to identify areas where you're going to have to line segments of pipe, what else are you going to come out of that report?
A lot of the inflow sources are going to be private residents where you'll maybe just have to chase on disconnecting sump pumps and stuff like that, that is more just.
That's the tricky one.
Yeah, yeah.
We are really required though to deal with this issue, right? This is not an optional.
No.
Certainly by regulation, it's not an option, but you've been pushing it down the road a little.
Yes, right, but we are supposed to deal with it, right?
You had basically until that 27 days to do the Phase One work, the Phase Two work is basically done through agreement with Master DEP, and we're probably a year beyond that at this point, I guess, but eventually you're going to.
No, obviously, money is an issue, that's, we, right now, I would favor not doing anything, spending money on anything, if we could postpone it for a while, but right now, but.
There is an appropriation.
There is, that's why my question was.
We got authorization from town meeting, the last special town meeting in June to go forward, it's a $150,000 budget. I'm getting a little concerned with some of the other spend that we haven't talked about yet here, that's pretty critical.
Yeah.
So at some point, I'd love to know what we have appropriated, what we have coming down the road, and where we can make adjustments and changes, because I know one critical issue is going to cost about a lot of grand, so.
Okay, get in on the agenda, Ed.
Ken, would this be, the funds to pay for this be generated by an increase in the sewer?
Eventually, yes.
Eventually, yeah.
How much do you think that would result in?
You know, I haven't figured it out yet, I wish I could say that I know.
I'd say that at some point, you may do a sewer rate study, or one rate study, or two rate study in this case.
Yeah, and in fact, we should be doing, we should do a sewer rate study, that's something that's been hanging in fire for a while. Is this part of a master plan too, the sewer system?
It's been a flawed plan until I do that section.
That's another question I have, we've got a master plan, it's been out there since 2016, I have no idea where we are, but topic for another day.
We actually had the master plan on the agenda for the next meeting at one time.
Yes. Put it back under. So we got, we got this appropriated, most of this, correct?
Appropriation is there, most of it, right. For the specific purpose.
You want to take any action here?
My recommendation is that we go forward with this.
Yeah, but do we have to vote on it, if we're already going forward on it? All right, what do you want us to do?
I would like your authorization to move forward and to sign a contract.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion?
I'm not in favor until I see the other capital projects.
Okay. Can we get capital projects for next week and see where we are before we vote on this? Can we vote on this next week?
I'll do what I can.
Yeah, just.
Right now, right now, you know, without looking at everything, I can look at the master plan too and see what we said there about this kind of thing. I'll do the best I can.
Okay, okay, we'll delay the voting on this till next week, till we see, okay?
Well, if you get a motion in second, you might as well take the vote.
Maybe we'll vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, so we can go with it, but I still want to see appropriations.
Sure.
Good work you have right now. We can't, we can't, we're just surprised you get in the middle of it.
Well, the project, obviously. Phase One is done, this is appropriate, Phase Two, the project hasn't started yet, you can say it has any appropriations for it.
Well, I mean, obviously, there's a significant issue here, I don't know what is more significant to the community than this. It's costing us $900,000, $900,000 to a million dollars a year for sewage fees at Pittsfield. If we can cut that back some way.
By 40%?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, what else is more important than that?
Topic we talked about executive session.
Okay, yes, yes, I see what you're saying, okay.
So you guys are all set, clarifying, we voted to authorize the continuance of the project.
Really, we're below 10 people, so you'll be back in the second floor. That's great. Good work, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a planning budget update, Ken, I'll turn this over to you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Ed. Okay, this is the final, I mean, there could be some final adjustments, but the main additional item in here is the final school district budget. That was passed last Thursday, you can see that on the bottom of Page Two. It didn't materially affect what we spoke about last week.
All right, so where are we?
Page Two.
There's this budget right here.
Oh, okay, that, okay, I thought it was a separate thing, okay, Page Two.
So there may be some small adjustments here, it won't, you know, when Sandy and I collaborate and looking over all these numbers, make sure we have the right numbers in here, but this is very close. So that's, I mean, this is our total spending plan, total gross budget is $18.6 million, now, excuse me, I'm looking at next year, it's $19.3 million.
Where are we now, Ken?
I'm looking at the bottom of Page Three.
Page Two.
Right down the bottom, this is total gross budget.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay, the total gross budget is up 4.1%, if you just run your finger up all the way to the top, you'll see for the town budget, regular appropriations, you'll see the total town spending is 8.2 million, which is down a little bit from last year, only principally to the fact that we, remember, we paid the bonds on the town hall and for some of the demolition of all the buildings, it was down a little bit.
How does this translate into the tax rate?
Translates into a tax rate, when you add in, you know, the school spending as well, we're looking at a 10% increase in tax rate. Every homeowner is going to spend $437 more.
Well, that includes everything.
That's everything.
Yeah, including the assessments for the new school.
Yes, you can see those.
Well, I mean, originally, it had been projected to be $640 for the average homeowner, so you've gotten it down to 400.
Well, we had another assessment that had like $300.
Yeah. You're basing on the year that has the cost of the demolition.
That's right.
Which would have dropped out if we're not, if we hadn't been doing the school, so you have to really add that in.
Yeah.
Because we're doing it on a year that was unusually high.
Yes.
The increase, the 10% is on a high yield already.
Right.
Right, so it is, it's, it's big.
Yeah. So you can see if you go to Page, the bottom of Page Two.
36 bucks a month, a little over 36 bucks a month.
On the bottom of Page Two, all the way over to the right, you can see the school district budget, of course, the big number in there is the debt service for the high school. That's all the debt service, it's not just the high school in there, but the majority of this for the high school. So again, the state, projected state revenues are down a little bit. It's 2.2, we expected 2.4% increase in revenues from the state, and it looks like it's going to be 2.2%. So our property tax assessment has to make up the difference.
So we're talking a little over $36 a month increase.
For around $400?
437.
437.
It was about a little over 36. Any questions for Ken? So this goes back to the finance committee?
Finance committee has to finish their business, yes, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, you all signed on that, Ken?
I am, if anyone else has any more questions.
Okay, final draft of the ATM one?
So here it is, and I think I numbered the articles correctly, I've taken out those, as we discussed last week, I've taken out those articles that were no longer necessary, and we ended up with a 19 article warrant, no ballot questions. And I could run through them briefly if I would.
Did anybody have any questions?
So what I would ask you to do then is to approve the warrant subject to a town council.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve submission of the warrant as presented to the annual town meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made in second.
Subject to a town council.
Subjected to a town council.
Okay, a motion's been, yeah, a motion's been made in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
One of the things, if you'll pause me for a minute, we might want to consider here is whether we ought to think about postponing our annual town meeting. One of the pieces of legislation that the governor, we could probably do it now under existing state law, we couldn't do it for any more than 30 days, and it's after the discretion of the moderator. We did it once a couple of years ago, when we actually had a hurricane bearing down on us, and we postponed a town meeting, but it's after the discretion of the moderator, it's no more than 30 days from the date the moderator chooses to postpone the town meeting, so the best we could do is have it beginning of June.
After the election.
It would be after the election, elections are more difficult.
Yes.
And you can't do it except for.
Why? Unless it is part of the town meeting.
Well, it's part of the town meeting, but we can't move the election, we can move the town meeting, but we can't move the election.
Can we move this?
All right, yeah, it's good to know.
So.
Should we move it, I mean, how long have we noticed that we have to do before, I mean, this seems like it's going to be like a week by week decision here.
Right, well, we can move forward, issue the warrant, post the warrant, get almost right up to the day of the annual town meeting and say.
I just assumed that and see, instead of going crazy and.
Yeah, well, then you can, if we postpone it just before the May, what?
May sixth.
May fourth?
I think it's the fourth.
Just before that, for 30 days, can we do it over three days?
Under the current statute, the governor is proposing an amendment to the statute that would allow us to go even into the next fiscal year, which would be extraordinary because of the extraordinary situation.
Well, the suggestion is if we follow that logic, we could possibly roll, if we have to, the annual town meeting into the special town meeting too.
Yeah, that makes sense, then we have one meeting, saves some money.
Yeah, right. Is there an information sheet that goes along with this, because I remember, John, you brought up an issue in Article One, which is a change in location, that's not, let's say, once that passes, it's not, something's coming before the select board for final approval.
Wow.
Right?
It's, you can explain to me, and it certainly is something to legal interpretation, but it's nothing but an opinion. I mean, the board is.
The power is vested in the select board, what will happen, Joe, is I'll do motions, propose motions, and in this part of the motion, there's also an explanation, and that's required by our bylaws to be given to voters.
Now, if it passes, is the board obligated to do what the citizens want?
No.
No.
I would say no, I mean, we've already voted, took up this issue twice in one year.
I would.
I would say yes.
I'd kind of be obligated to see.
Because if town, if voters in the town had a legit citizen's petition for this article and it passes a town meeting, the citizens of Dalton have spoken, there's nothing for us to take action on. So that's why I don't understand that part.
It's only because legally.
I'm trying to get ahead of it, because I don't think our residents understand it either.
Right, I think part of the reason was that at one time in the South, they moved the voting places where it was very difficult for certain poor people to get to.
Yeah.
So that they made limits about, you know, the certain population wanted, the white people wanted the town to be voting only in the white section, so, and so they put limits on about how it could actually be changed.
Yeah.
So that you wouldn't get minority, would still have a chance to have a vote.
Sure.
To get to a voting place.
So you know it passed.
They might not have cars or something, you know.
Sure.
So that was, that's why there were some rules passed about try to protect minority groups.
Okay. So it comes before the board after the town votes?
But I mean, but it isn't even an issue obviously here, I mean, getting to one of the other places is, I think, at least equal.
It might not even be an issue.
Yeah.
I guess my question is that if the town, if the attendees of the town meet and vote this in the affirmative, then what's the next step on that vote? It's done and the voting location changes?
No, it would be up to the board where they want to embrace or even entertain what's passed as an advisory opinion at the town meeting.
I mean, there's no reason, physically, it couldn't be done, but that would be an issue, for some reason why physically you couldn't move what you need, the equipment to get there.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get ahead of this, because I don't think the people who put this petition out there understand that.
Well, sure, they do.
And then so if the town votes to approve this change of location and then we deny it, we're going to have some.
Angry people.
Angry people, so we should make sure we identify this as an advisory item or.
I don't think that's the case at all, because the board took up this issue twice in one year about moving to polling place, and both times, we opted for the CRA, and there was no angry people, in fact, most people thought it was a great idea to keep it up there.
I think this is.
The 40 people who signed.
The 40 people signed this.
The 40 people who signed this are angry.
Are not happy with us.
Oh, really? Did you ever look at it? Wait a minute, did you look at the names on this petition?
No.
I did. Do you look at them?
I looked at them.
Yeah, it does.
Why?
Because the petition, no, I'm not going to say in front of an open meeting.
Sure, sure, okay.
Okay, let's just.
There's a reason why.
All right, let's move on, gentlemen.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just one other thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, is that we've already asked for the auditorium of Cona Regional High School. We think, you know, we think parking will be okay, but I wanted to just let you know that I don't, I don't know what the situation will be here with the construction.
Oh, yeah, the construction.
With the construction.
Yeah.
So this would be the time, if you would rather hold it in Nescus to let me know, we'll change it.
Okay.
For now, you know, the board had voted in the past.
I think if we move it, we should move the location to Nescus, because by then, for sure, it'll be.
It'll be pretty disruptive, but probably by the first of May.
Yeah.
It will still be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, item 10, nomination of animal inspector of animals.
All right, we had some paperwork at hand, right, Bob?
Some paperwork, this is really, Greg Elser, our animal control officer, also serves as our animal inspector. We nominate the person and the state actually confirms, the Department of Agriculture actually confirms the person in that position as inspector of animals. It's always been routine, but I always bring it before the board.
All right, so I would move that Greg Elser be appointed as what?
Inspector of animals.
Inspector of animals. I have some paperwork yet.
I will second that.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, okay, a motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we go to town manager updates. Ken, you're back on again.
Okay, the first one is on electrical supply. We got the final pricing on electrical supply, and they were actually a little bit lower than what you saw last week. And we stuck with the basic plan that Richard Hall brought forth. So the basic product, it's, Dynergy was the low bidder, a company called Dynergy, it's a 36-month contract, and the price for the basic product, which means the renewable energy portfolio, as well as some more green energy, it's the greenest product available, priced less than we're paying right now. So it came in at 9.4 cents.
Oh, good.
It's 36-month term, we're paying now, at Dunlop Center, we're paying 10.7 cents.
Okay.
And there's going to be a secondary product where we add a little bit more green energy to the supply, comes up to 43%, and that is at 10.1 cents, so it's, even that's going to be cheaper.
Okay, I have a dumb question, probably. People with solar, now, the people that rent a solar, now, they pay a fee to the company, but then their supply still goes through whoever. Can they opt into this also?
Yes, I think, to the extent that they get some supply.
Yes, they're going to.
Then they're going to automatically be in this unless they opt out.
Okay, okay, thank you. Good.
So that's been signed and sent in, we got to get it in by 3 o'clock today, and so that's done.
Thank you.
And Pittsfield, Pittsfield essentially, you know, we, the plan was to match Pittsfield on the basic product, and then Pittsfield's going for a much greener, going for the highest price. Green product is optional, but it's far above what we're paying now, so.
Okay, I'd like to thank you and Richard for taking care of that.
Yeah, Richard did a good job, I appreciate it, especially last week. The last thing I have for you is just an update as to the bidding of the, the streets, Phase One of the streets, you'll remember that.
Yes, yes.
So there's a little bit scheduled, foresight are the engineers on this project and the two schedule that they came up with. So it's going to be bid in April, opened up in May, instructed over the summertime, this extension completion in August, that's the first, and just so you remember, there's a second handout that shows you the list of streets and the estimate of the cost and the two alternates.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah.
So based on this schedule, we will be blacktopping or repairing 13 to 14 streets in April.
Yeah, not in April, but in sometime after May.
Yeah, it's good.
That's really good. Okay, thank you. Okay, remarks to the select board, any remarks?
Yeah, I guess missed this agenda, but maybe we can put it for, oh, we'll get to agendas later, so.
Okay. I'd like to thank this board for, and Board of Health for stepping up and Dan and everybody for, you know, participating in this. I think it's a little scary, but necessary at this point, so.
If I may.
Yeah.
If you can make arrangements to have electronic copy of any of the documents you have signed to me, I can make sure that they get on the emergency management.
That is a real good way of getting people to know it, thank you.
And the other ones within the community, and that would include the declaration about 10 people.
Okay.
Okay, anything you get like that, send it to me, and I'll see that it gets put out.
Thank you, that's a really good idea. Okay, anything else? Okay, items for future agendas.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'll just take, I'm going to say, I'll take these minutes, and you can take them to your chairman, or I can take them, and just give them to Judy and she can hand them out next week. Want to take them or remind me to?
You can take them if you don't mind.
I'll go put them on your desk, but I know, yeah, we deferred the minutes.
Okay.
To 3:23.
Okay, perfect.
We were, I really want to get our arms wrapped around this transfer station situation with either contracts or pricing. I'd ask for it to be on this agenda, but they got missed somehow, but so we can have it on the next agenda.
Can we get that on the next agenda, Ken?
Sure.
Transfer pricing.
Yeah. What is it that you'd like to mention?
So the competitive bid process, the current contract status, negotiation status.
That'd be for 317, or 323.
Because it sounds like from last update, the Casellas dragging that feet on the contract, and I don't want to be in a situation where we lose our negotiation position. Although we're assuming 3% on that budget, we're making an assumption with no contract in hand.
Right.
But I think Casellas acted in good faith by not asking for an increase in either the bag or the sticker price for this current year.
But we also took a vote in July to have competitive bids and a contract with a six month extension. We got to do that.
Yeah, well, no doubt, Joe, but I think Casellas has been acting in good faith.
I don't think so, if they're dragging a feet, not giving us a contract, that would disagree.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
That was the last update last time, you waited for Casella to give us a contract, he made multiple requests. That's not in faith, in my opinion.
All right, we'll take this up at our next meeting. Anything else? On what, on twice? Or what was the other one you wanted to, or, I think, the, something about future expenditures?
Yeah, it was the, getting our hands, getting our arms around the.
Can we do that in two meetings, two meetings from now? Would that be okay?
Yeah, just need to do it before you know the town meeting.
Okay.
Get appropriations.
Will that give you more time, Ken, to?
I think that one issue we talked about in executive session, we have to, we have to get, we have to get capital for that this year, we can't wait for grant programs of those kinds of nature.
Okay. Okay, this leads us to our announcements. The town clerk would like to remind the Dalton residents that dog licenses were due on January 1st. The information offering the option of license by mail was included in the annual census form. Send the proper fees, precipitating or neutering or rabies, documentations. These documentations and fees can also be placed in the drop box on South Carson Avenue. A $10 late fee is being charged as February 2020. So the owners of unlicensed dog after that date must remember to add an additional $10 to their check. A $50 failure to license fine will be imposed of this April 1st, so if you don't have them in there, get them in there, please. For any questions, please contact the town's clerk's office at 413-684-6111, extension 14 or 15. The Dalton Police Department is still reminding the citizens of Dalton that the winter parking bans, which went into effect on November 15th, 2019, will still be in effect until April 15th, 2020. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, and 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach Mark at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. I hold office hours by appointments in the Town Hall or at the Senior Center. For information or to schedule an appointment, please call 684-6111, extension 11. We have one from the CRA, and it says, Dear members and friends, we are in the midst of unprecedented times and changes, challenges, while in this difficult time to make, we have to make this following decision. Due to the government's recent announcements regarding business closures and recommendations from medical professions and local officials, the Community Recreation Association has decided to close our doors beginning March 17th. We anticipate opening on Monday, April 15th, but please continue checking for updates at daltoncra.org, Facebook and Twitters. And they go on to say they realize it's disappointment and inconvenience for our members, but it's very important to stop the spread of this virus, okay? And that is it. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I thank you guys.